Okay, good evening. This is a continuation of the April 24th Board of Education meeting. The Board's been in closed session since 6:30 for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, approval of April 11, 2017, closed session minutes, contract negotiations, and litigation. Could be rise for the pledge. Oh, there's seven Board members present and non-absent. Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll start with public comments, and we ask that you speak for up to three minutes. And also, the Board doesn't respond during public comments, but we will follow up through the Board or administration at a later time. So first on the list is Teresa Doring.
On Tuesday evening, April 18, I attended the Middle School Task Force presentation at Churchville Middle School. During the presentation, I filled out an index card with my name and my questions. My questions were not answered at the end of the meeting. I'm going to ask them tonight. Why was there not a representative from the World Language Department on this task force? Which World Language teacher from York was involved in making these drastic decisions? Is York on board with these changes? On Tuesday night, Dr. Henderson Baum said, "We believe that if students complete three years of a World Language at the middle school, they should be ready to move into Level Three at York." Who is the "we" making these decisions? How can this huge shift in the philosophical teaching of world languages in Elmhurst be made without a World Language teacher from neither middle school nor York? Who checked with the ACTFOL standards? Who researched best practices for the teaching of world languages? I have read all of the district emails relating to this topic, and there has been no evidence that a World Language teacher from any school took part in this process. I know you're not going to answer my questions tonight. Dr. Moyer said there will be an email sent out soon containing frequently asked questions that came forth during the three middle school presentations. I'm asking you to be transparent and let the public know who is the "we" making these world language decisions. Thank you.
My name is Emily Demuth Ishida. I am a community member as well as president of the Elmhurst PSRP Council. For those who may not know, PSRP stands for paraprofessionals and school-related personnel. We are the various assistants, secretaries, and campus supervisors who serve the students of Elmhurst every day. Since tomorrow is Secretaries' or Administrative Assistance Day, I feel that we would be remiss if we did not acknowledge the vital role that secretaries have in our schools. The secretary is often the first person a family meets when they bring their kindergartner to register or move into the community. The secretaries become the face of District 205 to many of our families. Some secretaries have served for decades in the district and carry in their heads and in their hearts the institutional memory of the district. Secretaries control access to most of our buildings, playing an integral role in the safety and security of our children. At all levels, from early childhood to high school, they perform an endless array of functions. They answer phones and greet and screen visitors. They create reports, verify residency, order office and school supplies, update web pages, maintain calendars of events and coordinate such events, and manage buses and prepare officials' contracts for athletic events. They provide administrative support to principals at every building as well as numerous departments at York. They generate purchase orders and handle college and scholarship files and maintain all student records and process transcript requests. They accept and deposit funds for lunches and field trips and registration fees and team sports and a host of other things. They coordinate substitutes and translate documents and submit district and state reports and a hundred other tasks too numerous to mention. And they do it all with smiles on their faces and sometimes candy on their desks to further sweeten the day for the rest of the staff members. I think it is safe to say that the school district could not operate without its secretaries and that the school doors could not open without them. So on Secretaries' Day tomorrow and tonight, may we thank our secretaries for the work that they do for the staff and students of Elmhurst. Thank you.
That's all we have for public comments on the sheet. Are there any other public comments tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to approval of closed session item. Jim?
I move that the Board of Education approve Nikki Tamru as Director of Literacy with a start date of July 1, 2017, and a salary of $129,522.
Second. I'll second. Okay, moved by Jim, seconded by Emily. Is there discussion?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Nikki. Second of all, I just want to voice support for building a culture where we promote people that work here, so that they have a career path. They're people we know, people we trust. I think this is a great decision. I congratulate Nikki and wish her the best of luck in her new role.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bestido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner? Yes, it's seven i's, no n's, and motion passes. Congratulations. Okay, approval of board meeting minutes. Are there any changes to two sets of minutes, or actually three, March 21st, April 3rd, April 11, 2017? Okay, hearing none, those will be approved as presented. Recognition. Recognition. We want to recognize Emily Bestido for her years of service on the Board. This is her last board meeting. And Ellen Walsh, our administrative assistant, sent a couple of questions to Emily. It's routine when we have a board member leaving, and she answered some of these questions, and I'm going to share a few of her responses, and then the Board can talk.
I was not told these would be read out loud at a board meeting.
Okay, so Emily Bestido was elected to Elmhurst District 205 Board in 2013. During the past four years, she has served on the following committees: Learning and Teaching, Finance and Operations, Policy, and City Park School. And this is coming from Emily's voice. She became interested in becoming a board member because she felt that she could contribute to the community. She said, "I had experience in school finance and an interest in board policy. I was so thankful to be part of the great Elmhurst community and felt that this was a way to serve and give back." She believes the Board's most important accomplishment during her tenure was the hiring of our superintendent, Dr. David Moyer. In second place is the negotiation of the current teacher's contract. I think those two, she says, "I think those two things have had the greatest impact on the district." When asked about her most important personal accomplishment, Emily said navigating through tough times that could have divided the community. When I was first elected, there were challenges at Conrad Fisher with the direction of the English Language Learners classrooms and district policy. It was a very tough time for the community administrators and the Board. She tried to make the community feel heard. She made herself available at all hours to be to concerned community members. The same happened last year with an instructional classroom issue. The community may disagree with the decisions made, but she wasn't going to let them feel like they weren't represented or their voices weren't heard. On a lighter note, Emily explained that she encouraged more casual board culture to encourage approachability. She says, "Before I got on the Board, everyone was called Mr. Collins or Mrs. Ebner." She suggested we go by first names. Chris Bloom used to wear sport coats. Now it's jeans.
I said, "Check the video." Trust me.
Her parting thoughts and advice to new member Cara Ciforio is this: "I have gained so much respect for teachers and administrators. There's so much more to education than I could ever have imagined, and I'm so happy to leave it to the professionals. I'm confident in the ability of our staff and administrators to keep moving this district in the right direction. Trust your administrators, hire great professionals, and hold them accountable, and ask lots of questions." We're really going to miss you. And I'd just welcome any other Board members to say a few words about Emily.
Keep it brief. It's going to be a long meeting, so.
Emily, I want to say it's a pleasure to serve with someone who clearly and directly speaks her mind so often, but always for the benefit of the people. We're supposed to be here to represent the kids, our employees, people in this community, the taxpayers, and I'm grateful to have served. I think a good word suits Emily is fearless. She's always taken a walk-the-walk approach, willing to speak directly and clearly on difficult issues, make difficult motions at times, but I've enjoyed the asides in closed session, the humor, the casualness that they describe and everything, and I want to thank you very much for being a leader in my family's community.
I'm going to continue on with the, call it a simile when you use the same. So I am going to say, without a doubt, getting to know Emily was, and working with her, was excellent. Without a doubt, she's extremely courageous and very clear and concise on what she feels, willing to listen to anyone's opinion. And, this is a piece that brought everyone together here, is that Emily is absolutely, she is just a very open and warm person. She says what she says with a smile, and then she laughs. And, you know, it's just, it really brings, it brought the group together, and we are definitely going to miss that. I'm going to say, okay, we might not see you at many board meetings anymore, but knowing that you're in the community, still advocating for all our students, and advocating for the community and making sure their voices are heard, makes me sleep really well at night. So, thanks.
You know, I have to admit, four years ago at this meeting, when Emily was first sworn in, all I could keep thinking was, do we really need another lawyer? But we did, and Emily has approached the job with a great deal of enthusiasm, insight, wisdom, and humor, and this district is far better off for having had her here for the last four years.
I feel like Jim Collins, I'm getting a little choked up here, but I do, you know, I can't leave without saying thank you to everybody, the staff, all the employees of our district, you know, the PSRP representative who was up here really, you know, we could say that about all the thousands of employees that we have, and, you know, we're very fortunate to live in this community with these schools. It's why my husband and I picked Elmhurst, and I'm very proud of it, and I'm proud of the administration, and I know I leave you guys in good hands. I'm sorry, I'm emotional. You guys can't say nice things about me, expect me to be professional, but I really, I'm not going to say everything I want to say because I'm feeling emotional, but I do have to acknowledge the Board members that are up here with me. All of them have served longer than I did. They're all on their second and third terms, and it's a tough job, and it's been a pleasure to work for you, and all these people are doing it for the right reasons. I can honestly say that, that they want what's best for this community, and they want nothing in return other than to have done a good job. And I think that that's, it's rare, so. And now, before I blubber on anymore, I want to say thank you to my boys who are in the audience. They are, well, this is a bittersweet moment for me, they are absolutely elated that...
That's because of the ice cream.
Yes, I am taking them out for ice cream after this to celebrate, so they're excited about that, but also the fact that I'm going to see them a lot more because it's been an honor to do it, but this does take a lot of time, and I'm so happy that Cara has stepped up to do it. I think she's going to be a great representative of the community, and just like everyone else up here, I know that she's going to put her heart into this and do what she feels is best for the students, and that's a great thing.
Okay, next is reorganization of the Board of Education. First is, I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of the certified election results. We get certification from DuPage County Election Commission that Jim Collins, Margaret Harrell, and Cara Ciforio are duly elective officials on our school board for the next four years. Congratulations for being elected. Okay, and then next, we will administer the oath to our new school board member Cara Ciforio. Can I come forward? No, they don't have to.
Yeah, well, too bad.
Okay, do you want to stand at the podium? Okay, welcome. Okay, you have a copy in front? Okay, so I'm going to read it, and you can raise your right hand, and I'll read, and then you can repeat after me. Okay. "I, Cara Ciforio, do solemnly affirm..." "I, Cara Ciforio, do solemnly affirm..." "...that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member..." "...that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member..." "...of the Board of Education of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205..." "...of the Board of Education of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205..." "...in accordance with the Constitution of the United States..." "...in accordance with the Constitution of the United States..." "...the Constitution of the State of Illinois..." "...the Constitution of the State of Illinois..." "...and the laws of the State of Illinois..." "...and the laws of the State of Illinois..." "...to the best of my ability..." "...to the best of my ability." "I further affirm that..." "...I further affirm that..." "...I shall respect taxpayer interests..." "...I shall respect taxpayer interests..." "...by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets..." "...by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets..." "...I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion..." "...I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion..." "...by my fellow board members..." "...by my fellow board members..." "...and others who seek a hearing before the Board..." "...and others who seek a hearing before the Board..." "...while respecting the privacy of students and employees..." "...while respecting the privacy of students and employees..." "I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority..." "...I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority..." "...as an individual..." "...as an individual..." "...and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting." "...and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting." "And I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board..." "...and I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board..." "...while retaining the right to seek changes..." "...while retaining the right to seek changes..." "...in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels." "...in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels." Congratulations. You're part of the Board.
All right, now we're on the elect officers of the Board section of this evening's agenda, and I have a nomination for president.
I nominate Shannon Ebner for president of the Board of Education.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Nominated by Karen, seconded by Chris. Are there any other nominations for president? Hearing none. I'll turn it back over to our, I was going to say new president, but repeating president.
Are there any nominations for vice president?
I nominate Margaret Harrell for vice president of the Board of Education.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by John, seconded by Jim. Are there any other nominations for vice president? Okay, Margaret Harrell is vice president. Are there nominations for secretary? I move that Karen Stufan is secretary of the Board.
I'll second.
Any other nominations for secretary? Okay, hearing none, Karen Stufan will be secretary. Are there any comments on the 2017-18 meeting schedule? Okay, hearing none, that will stand. Okay, moving to board committee appointments. For the Board Improvement Committee, that is comprised of the three officers of the Amy, are you, I'll just list who's on each of these committees. There's not much change. So Board Improvement would be the three officers. Finance and Operations has no change. I'll just keep going. Learning and Teaching, Cara Ciforio will join that committee. Performance Management, that will remain the same. Policy Committee, Cara Ciforio will join that committee. But that's a good one for new board members. Okay. Lizardro Museum, Karen Stufan. John, the SASED Governing Board, that's a two-year commitment. So you've got another year to go. And then for City Park School, we have John now because Emily has left. Do you want to take that on your own, or we can? Yeah, go ahead.
A second committee member would be good. I don't know how often we'll send two, but it helps to, more the mayor, better the ideas.
I don't know if there's any volunteers.
I meant to say the better the ideas.
Your name for now, and then we can work on that unless there's... Okay, John, it's you for now. Okay, then all others are the same. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we're going to move on to reports and presentations. We have Elizabeth Hennessy here tonight. Thank you. This is a bond options presentation.
Thanks so much. Great, thanks for having me here tonight. My purpose is to do an outline of some bond options, looking at the market, looking at where you are now, and just some various options for you to consider. I will say right out of the box, there is no number that has been considered. This is just looking at your current debt and what you might be able to do going forward as you work through your community engagement and look at your capital facility needs and prioritize those. So, page one looks at the bond market, and it has been very exciting, focusing on just the last year, this is the last five years, but if we go to October, you know, rates kind of were in a range in the year before that, and then we came to the November election, and interest rates went up faster than we've ever seen them. What this graph shows, the blue line is the 20-year AAA Municipal Market Data Index, and the green line is the 10-year Municipal Market Data Index. So we had that tremendous increase in rates after the election of President Trump, and then we got into January, things seemed to normalize. In the last month, as, you know, the new administration completes their first 100 days, interest rates have come down for a number of reasons. One of those is that the policies that we're going to get put in place right away, namely the redo of the Affordable Care Act, and then the supposed tax cuts have not gotten approved yet. On top of that, we had global... On top of that, we had global instability with bombing in Syria. And so all those things together has made investors rush towards safe and secure investments, the number one being U.S. Treasury securities, causing the yields on those to go down and the municipal market follows. So we'll see what we have in store. The Fed has said they're going to increase rates three times this year. They did the first increase in March. So maybe there's another two rate increases. Most people are thinking that the June rate increase may not occur. So we have lots to see. But the good news is in the last month, we've seen interest rates come down again to more normal 2016 levels. The next slide looks at the yield curve and the green line reflects where we are now. And the yield curve looks at that AAA Municipal Market Data Index for years one through 30. So you can see on the short end where the green line is now compared to the past seven years, it's higher and that's as a result of some of the rate increases the Fed has done, increasing the short end of the yield curve. But as we go out longer, you can see we're third highest that we've been in the last three years. So this tells us that long-term rates are pretty low again right now. So again, we'll see what's yet to come. In Illinois, we have a statutory debt limit and it's 13.8% of the most recent EAV. We just got the 2016 EAV released. District has about 95 million of outstanding principal. So a net statutory debt limit of 229 million. So plenty of debt capacity. So the current outstanding debt situation is shown on page four. And if we look at the middle column, the yellow column, you can see the debt payments only go out to 2025. So less than 10 years. And really, the board, the past board and the administration is to be complimented on a strategy undertaken over the last four years to refund bonds for interest savings and in fact, over 15 million of interest savings to the taxpayers. But not only that, you actually shortened the debt as well as lowered the annual payment. So you've actually paying the debt you do have off quicker. So that's put you in a good position as you consider your capital needs and financing options to issue more bonds. So if we go to the next page, I think the graph is helpful. What we've got in the blue bars, the light blue bars, represent debt service payments for bonds that were issued pursuant to referendums 2006 and prior. I think that was your last referendum for bonds. And then the dark blue bars are non-referendum limited tax debt for things like life safety. So you can see the bonds are all paid off by 2025. And the highest payment you've got over the next several years is 15.9 million. Before the whole refunding and restructuring program, that payment was 18 million, the high point. So you can see how that's come down. So this is what's currently outstanding in terms of the payments on your debt. If we go to the next page, we just did an example here. If you were to go to the voters and ask for $100 million referendum bond in spring of 18 and you issued the bonds in June all at once, you could issue that new debt where the long-term payments are going to be less than you're currently paying right now. But while some of your existing bonds are outstanding, it causes some increases in the payments. And the increase over your current 53 cent tax rate results in about a 25 cent tax rate over three years increase. And if we look at the impact on the average home value as set forth by Zillow's Median Home Index as of February 2017 at 387,300, you know, that would be about $300 for those three years. But then the debt payments drop down to just 12 million. So if we look at the graph, we can see what happens in this example. The green bars represent the interest paid on that 100 million and they take you up over your current max of 15.9 million in three or four of those years. But then the rest of the payments, as the rest of your debt gets retired, level off below what your current maximum is. So that's kind of a base case. So because you've got this nice quick amortization of your outstanding bonds, we talked about how can we avoid those green bars going over your maximum, current maximum of 15.9 million? What could we do to affect that? And the one thing we can do is to refund some of those bonds once again. The most opportune time to do that is when they become callable again, which is out in 2021. So this next option looks at the 100 million, again issued pursuant to a referendum in March, issued in June with a refunding in 2021. So that refunding is kind of blended into that middle column and that keeps your debt payments under that maximum of 15.9 million. It makes you reach that 15.9 million a year or two earlier than you otherwise would, resulting in an eight cent increase, taking the tax rate from that 53 cents up to 61 or $104 on the home in this scenario. But the important thing in this scenario, I think, is also, like the prior, that your payments over time level out at about 13.8 million, lower than your current debt service maximum. And we can see that in this graph. So again, the green bars is the new 100 million. The purple bars is that refunding in 2021. But this shows that you're able to issue 100 million with the refunding and keeping the payments no greater than what you've currently got outstanding. I will add, because of this volatile kind of interest rate environment where we're not sure what's going to happen in the next several years, in all of these options, we've added 0.5% or 50 basis points to current interest rates. So we have a cushion. And in the next options, I'm going to show you, which look at issuing bonds over time, we've added 50 basis points to each subsequent issue in hopes of giving ourselves some cushion and some protection against possible volatile markets ahead. Now, when you go to referendum, you don't have to issue all the bonds at once. In these two options, just as an example, we showed issuing all the bonds at once and paying them off over the maximum term, which is 20 years. So the next options, look at issuing the bonds in pieces. So depending on how your capital plan turns out, you may have projects, you know, that are priorities right away, but the major projects aren't till further down the road. So breaking the bonds into pieces can save you interest because your interest cost, as you know, is made up of the amount you issue times the rate, times the amount of time it's outstanding. So if you issue in pieces, the whole thing is going to be outstanding less time. So that helps save a bit. So this next option is again, just an example. In this case, we're issuing 128 million. In January of 19, we're issuing 25 million. Come back two years later in 2021, another 25 million along with that refunding. And then in 2023, 78 million. So this allows us to go out 20 years from the point of the last issuance, in this case in 2023, presuming a 2018 refunding or referendum. So in this case, there's really no tax increase or very small on your 53 cents because the, with the refunding and issuing bonds over time, lowering the interest costs, we're able to keep the debt very close to what you're paying, you know, right now. So right now, we're at 53 cents. I think the tax rate levels off at 58 cents, but below your current maximum of 15.9 million. So again, this is just an example. If you needed more money sooner, the total debt service might be a little higher. But just to give you an idea of what's possible when you phase in the bond issues. Of course, you have interest rate risk by waiting, but because the bonds are out a lower period of time, you save interest. The last option is another option, going up to the 15.9 million, the current maximum of your outstanding bonds, and just keeping the tax levies there at the current interest rates plus 50 basis points for each subsequent issue. In this case, we're coming in 2019 with a $50 million issue. In 2021, another 50. And then in 2023, 51 million. So in this scenario, again, just another scenario, we have bonds issued every other year at about a third apiece for a total of 151 million. And the beauty of this option is again, it doesn't go over your current maximum debt service payment of 15.9 million. So, you know, obviously, there's lots of ways to slice and dice and many permutations. My goal here tonight was just to give you an idea of what is possible within kind of your current confines of your debt payments. I know it's always important to try to keep taxes as level as possible to taxpayers and not look at very large increases. You know, this is clearly an extension. So no one can say, you're not increasing my taxes because you otherwise would be completely debt-free after 2025. But it's nice to know that you could in fact, go to the voters and talk about a plan that would keep your payments kind of on par with your payments as they are now.
Questions? Any questions from board members?
Just, thank you. This is kind of a chicken and the egg process that we're going through here. This is, by definition, iterative. The chicken and the egg, the egg is what can you afford? The chicken is what does it cost? Focus 205, put a lot of ideas out on the table. There's a process that we're going to go through to try to figure out ballpark estimates of that. At the same time, in parallel, we asked you the question that said, what could we afford with the gating factor being, we don't want to increase the tax, the annual tax burden. Like you said, you know, you could let it go to zero and then Lincoln doesn't get rebuilt and then, you know, the needs that we have in the district don't get met. Even the basic ones. I don't think any of this is by any means any kind of a recommendation that we issued this much or which. It's just trying to figure out as we go through this process of putting numbers around the Focus 205 options, you know, what could the different buckets look like? You know, if we did this, this is what this might look like. If we threw two or three more things, what would that look like? So this is necessarily a parallel path. It is not a commitment to issue bonds. It's really an exploration of the options on funding to help inform the further conversation around Focus 205. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Any other questions for Elizabeth? Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming. I guess Chris Welton, levy discussion?
I don't mind standing up here. The, we received the final EAV and new construction and tax rates from the county. When I came in October, I had estimated new construction at 40 million. Then I, that I had gotten some other information from the township where it scared me. So I had given you in December, 25.7 million as new construction. And it ended up being 38, 38 million, 436, oh 46, which was closer to my initial estimate of 40 million. But as usual, the actual extension is about a 1% less than what we levy. We always levy because we don't know what the new construction EAV will be. So we levy more at that point and then we end up, the increase is less than what we levied. And that's something that's been happening every year. So we ended up getting a, the tax extension is going up overall 2.46%. If you recall, this is a 0.7 CPI. So most of the increase of the 2.46 is related to new construction. The 38.4 million in new construction EAV is 1.76% of the 2.46%. The CPI being 0.7. The new construction EAV of the 38 million, 34 million is residential. The commercial is 420,000 and then the adjustments that they said, adjustments, 3.9 million. So most of this is residential new construction EAV. The overall EAV increase was a nine point, or I'm sorry, 8.66% is what the overall EAV went up. That's really it. Unless there's any questions about that.
Just one question. Did you say 400,000 of commercial new growth?
Yes, 420,000.
Residential is 38?
34 million.
34 million. That seems unusual until you realize that most of the commercial EAV growth is captured up in TIF funds and goes to redevelopment projects. Is that right?
That is correct.
So $38 million in new growth of residential and 400,000 of new growth commercial. And that's why, in my opinion, it's important to keep an eye and not do too much TIF.
Mobile Learning Initiative, Mary?
Good evening. This short presentation is really in response to our last meeting where there was a desire to better understand what the technology integration has looked like at the elementary level, professional learning, and what are the plans moving forward as we seek to expand that one-to-one Chromebook implementation. So just as a review, this year, we were one-to-one with our fifth grade. Our fourth grade was at a two-to-one level. And then overall, K3, there were an increased number of devices. That looked somewhat different in some of our buildings. For example, Fisher has a larger number of devices due to their Title I funding and purchasing some devices through there. So how has MLI impacted elementary instruction? So we have seen certainly an increase in writing and increased student engagement with writing when we're talking about the use of Chromebooks. writing when we're talking about the use of Chromebooks. Kids are much more willing to edit their own writing when they can go and do that electronically on their Chromebook versus when they were having to do that by hand and on paper with pencil and kind of erase, draw lines, and it just was a much more laborious process. So we find that the use of technology in conjunction with our Lucy Cawkins Writing Program has definitely increased the amount of writing that our kids are doing. And that's even been echoed. Ryan Dougherty, our Assistant Principal at York, and in some of his conversations with middle school teachers are saying that they're seeing kids come with more writing. The use of Zern, if you would recall, it's been a few months now when Dave Beatty was talking about the Eureka Math Program. Zern is an online support that really mimics the standards and the same type of implementation of math standards that Eureka does. It allows our students, though, to do some self-paced learning. So if we have some students who are working beyond the standard rather than sit with the whole class in that instruction, they have the ability to do some self-paced learning. Additionally, Zern allows them to go back and reinforce some of the standards if they could use some additional support. So having technology in kids' hands to use with that definitely is an enhancement. When we're talking about kids doing some research or project work, there's just an increase in student choice when you're able to look beyond the confines of your library and what's available there to really accessing everything, accessing experts beyond just written resources or websites that you find. But the ability to Skype in and have visits with true experts in fields can really be motivating for kids and open up some possibilities for them. We've definitely found some frustration in our teachers at grades K through four as they kind of scramble and look for ways to negotiate with each other to get more devices so that they can use the devices beyond the current level of implementation. So we feel that by increasing it, we can make better use of some of these changes that we've seen in instruction. So some of the professional learning that we've done during this school year, our D205 University consistently has a host of courses designed around technology. This year, at K5, we had 121 teachers participate in the D205 University courses on technology. What I was really happy to see, as I kind of broke that data down, was not only are they doing kind of the introductory classes, but they're moving beyond that and looking at using Chromebooks for getting feedback from kids, using dynamic resources, which is a push we want to bring to all of our schools to lower that cost of textbooks and that reliance on textbooks, and increasing the use of different Google apps. Our instructional coaches, when we hired our coaches, we had four coaches that were previously instructional tech coaches. So they have a really strong foundation in instructional technology. And in addition, one of the K5 coaches that we hired from within the district was just really strong in instructional tech overall. Those coaches really have taken the lead in supporting and providing professional learning to some of our other coaches who didn't have a strong of a tech background, so that all of our instructional coaches are able to support and lead that effort in the buildings. For example, one of our coaching days, our Coaching PD Days, was designed all around technology with our coach leaders and Kathy Baker, our coordinator, really facilitating how our coaches, kind of the areas they identified that they needed to become stronger in so they could take that back to the building, whether it was using Google Classroom and helping teachers use that, again, using some of the Google Apps to elicit feedback from students, just kind of a wide variety of things. And so then our instructional coaches are able to provide that ongoing support for integration. They recognize that technology isn't the goal, so it's not about using the technology, it's about how we can use technology as an accelerator for the learning. So that's a real strength with using the coaches for that, is they keep bringing the teachers back to the student learning versus what's the cool new tech thing out there. So as David Smith presented last time, we're looking to go one-to-one with our Chromebooks in third through fifth grade, and at this time, not making a decision on the primary grades until we're able to have a more thorough investigation, pilot and vetting of the different options, and potentially exploring some alternative devices to see their relevance to our younger learners. Last time, David talked about some of the touchscreens and the question of whether or not that would be more supportive. And so then, as we look at the professional learning for next year, we will continue to offer D205 University courses. All the time that we go through the school year, we gather input from teachers on courses that they need, things that they're looking for, modeling of effective technology integration by leaders, so administrators, coaches during professional learning. That's a really good way to help people see that. Developing an understanding of the SAMR model and work to moving beyond substitution. So the SAMR model talks about the different levels of technology integration, and the sort of basic beginning level is substitution. So for example, I'm practicing my math facts. Well, instead of doing flashcards, I'm practicing math facts on an app. That really doesn't change my learning. I'm just substituting one method of doing it for the other. When we think about going up all the way to the highest level where you're really transforming education, you're talking about the use of technology to create, you know, so creating something that demonstrates your knowledge, and that's when we really start to transform learning. And then the exploration of learning management systems to compare to Google Classroom with a potential small pilot. So a learning management system is something that is a contained program where you can develop modules of professional development. Teachers can use it for sort of a contained virtual classroom environment where parents can be a part of it, students can post work, students are able to blog and post comments to each other's. Many of the options of Google Classroom, up until now, other learning management systems have been far more robust than Google Classroom. The trade-off, though, is that Google Classroom is free. So our goal in learning and teaching next year is to really start to delve into looking at Google Classroom compared to some of the other systems out there to make sure we're getting the most bang for our buck out of Google Classroom.
And that is it. Short and sweet tonight. Any questions, Karen?
I do. Thank you so much for providing the feedback.
Not a problem.
Once again, I'll be focused on technology integration in the classroom, as you said, to enhance the learning for students. And so as we deploy this to our hundreds of teachers across the many buildings we have, we look at professional development, we look at instructional coaches, and we look at peer sharing.
Yes.
And that's great. So thanks for providing that information again. And then, once again, remind us how the feedback comes in from teachers to keep fine-tuning and making sure that we're providing the adequate, or not adequate, the help that they're needing.
To ensure that they're getting the support that they need, yes. So we do survey the teachers a couple of times during the year to check in, to see how things are going, certainly that on the boots-on-the-ground kind of feedback from instructional coaches and building leaders. They're often great resources to us to say, "Hey, our teachers are asking for some support in this." But also some formal ways of surveying them to make sure that we're hitting everything that we need to.
Thank you as well. Couple of questions. One of them, just maybe my not-understanding. But so when you develop curriculum, I mean, I think that, you know, the curb-jumping aspect of technology is when you get rid of textbooks. I mean, when you get to dynamic content, which can be assembled the way the kid wants to learn, how do you? We spend a lot of time ensuring consistency across grade levels, across buildings, across the district. How do you manage that? I think, is that loose tight, Dave? Do I say that right? And making sure everybody's within the same direction, but they have creativity within that direction?
Right. So I'll use a little bit at the elementary level where I talked about the use of Zern. So we have some teachers who would probably like to use that for all of their instruction. It is completely aligned to the Eureka Math curriculum. Everything would be consistent across the two programs. We have some teachers who've done a little bit of a pilot with it. Most of our teachers are starting with the traditional resource that we've purchased, but moving forward, that could be a little bit of the loose tight of what teachers really want to go this online route with it and who wants to stay with a more traditional resource. So that can be a loose tight. As we think about our upper grades, where we really start to look at those dynamic resources, that's where PLCs come in. So that's where our professional learning communities come in, where teachers are co-planning and looking at their curriculum, looking at their results together, so that if the two of you were teaching the same course and one of you had moved on to a dynamic resource and your results of student growth were much better, then we would ask Kara to really look at that and look at changing her practice to see if that had the impact on it. So it's really where the professional learning communities come in, that you get some of that loose tight where teachers are sharing with each other and coming to some decisions together about what's going to be most effective.
Okay, and how far away are we from? And again, I don't say that because I'm asking for a timeline.
I know.
Because, you know, we have to respect the way that the teachers teach and the evolution that comes through.
Absolutely.
But when you look at the district and where it is, how far are we away?
You know, I would say at the elementary, it will be a little bit slower just because of the age of the kids. Our teachers feel very strongly, when you're teaching literacy at the elementary level, kids need books in their hands, especially at the primary grades. But we are starting to work with the high school on a general timeline of where we're going to be moving toward that. And I think we have a couple that are shifting to dynamic resources, and every year I start to, I see it moving a little more. One of the hiccups for us is as we add ACP courses, we are required to use the texts that Indiana University selects, and by and far, they are still tied to traditional textbooks. That's not uncommon at the college level for a multitude of reasons, including who wrote the book. But, you know, that's part of it that goes along with it.
Margaret, I can tell you want me to ask a question? No? Okay. All right, I think I'm up next, too, with the request for resource preview. So these requests are coming from York High School for material display, and that is really driven from many of the new courses that are ACP dual-credit courses that are being launched next year. And the timing of it really is related to getting those resources from either the College of DuPage or Indiana University and us needing to mirror those resources. So the request tonight is for board approval to put those on display for the 30-day preview period.
So these are new courses that York wants to offer?
These are courses, these were new courses that were already approved back November, December, perhaps. Many of them are now dual-language, are ACP courses, and so the resources have to mirror that of the university. So, and some of the AP courses that are on there have new materials that reflect updated content that's necessary for the AP tests.
So this is just displaying?
This is the approval to display.
Mm-hmm.
For 30 days.
The new resources for the courses that were?
Yeah.
Approved and will be offered.
Mm-hmm, and then some of them are updates to AP resources.
Last question.
Yes.
So these resources will replace existing resources?
Replace existing.
In some cases, but not all of them, right?
Correct.
Okay. Back to the whole textbook thing, you know, so a good reason, again, you know, if we can get things on technology versus the textbooks to help out our parents.
I 100% agree, yes.
The AP Biology text is an e-text.
Yes.
So is that, will there be any paper text for that course at all?
No.
So none at all?
None at all.
So curiosity, is this our first class that is relying entirely on an e-text?
Oh, I don't think so, but that's a little bit different than the dynamic open resource because there's still a charge for that.
Right.
And where some of the dyna, but I don't, it's the only one that came forward this year, but I believe there were some existing classes that have some e-texts available to them.
Okay, so our migration is?
Yes.
Is underway.
But I'd like to see us move towards some of the free and open resources.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. Okay, next is the consent agenda. Are there any items board members want to remove from the consent agenda? Margaret?
I'd like to remove, I'd like to remove item F, approval of 2017, 2018 facility rental fees.
Okay, any other items? Okay, I need a motion to approve items except for item F.
I move that we approve the superintendent's agenda, consent agenda, items A through E and G through N.
I second.
Okay, moved by Karen, second by Margaret. Any roll call vote?
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Koforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes, it's seven ayes, no nays, the motion passes. Item F, I need a motion for item F.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the facility usage fees for 27, 2018 school year as outlined in the facility rental usage agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Margaret, second by Jim. Any discussion for item F?
Yes, so just a couple of things on here. I just thought we could take some time and just highlight, there's a couple of changes that were highlighted in the facilities agreement, and if we could just talk through some of those changes for our community would be helpful.
Well, the main change was that we increased fees 1%. The concept for the facility rental fees is that we, it's just a, to get reimbursed for our expenses, our costs. Under, on page two, under requests, we had added the sentence, "In addition, same-day reservation requests will incur a booking penalty of $100 for each space requested." We've had some problems where renters, regular recurring renters, call up the afternoon and want to reserve the space, and then we have to get all our guys to set everything up. It's just not the way we're set up to work, so this was the suggestion to deter or to encourage planning in order to make it work for the, our buildings. And so it would only be charged if they called. And so it would only be charged if they called and asked for the same day. They can't, I mean, prior to that sentence, it says, "All requests should be submitted through the online rental system no less than 14 days." So it says no less than 14 days, but yet we're still having them call the same day to reserve. And it tends to be this, you know, a certain same recurring organizations and I'm going to call them and make sure they understand this portion, that language. The other big changes, not big changes, but changes was related to equipment rental. On page seven, we had increased equipment rentals for Group E and F. And Group E and F are out of, out of district, out of Elmhurst organizations that are using, so non-Elmhurst, not-for-profit is E, and then Group F is outside of Elmhurst, private or for-profit groups. Some of the concern there was the use of equipment such as batting cages and the nets, that sort of thing are getting really worn out and so we increased the charges to Groups E and F for equipment usage. Those are the biggest changes that I recall we're making.
Yeah, thank you very much for that outline, Chris. And what I thought was most important was that you mentioned that there will be communication going out to the people that use this to let them know that there will be a change in the fee rate, in the fee structure. So thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes, seven ayes, no nays, and motion passes. We'll move to superintendent's action items.
Okay, thank you. You can see these next two are related to technology purchases. Dave reported at the first board meeting in April, the tech plan and budget that Chris built in and explained a little bit about how we're approaching our replacement and long-term planning in that regard. So it was explained in April, or at the first April meeting, so those are the next two motions. And Dave could, you know, field any questions if you had clarification, but it's part of what we presented previously this month.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve and authorize a superintendent or the superintendent's designee to purchase Acer Chromebooks from CDW, Gaver Chromebook carts from Troxell Communications, and AMAC computers from Apple Inc. in an amount not to exceed $325,000 in purchase price.
I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Just go ahead.
I'd just like to thank Mary for turning it around pretty quick up here and telling us about, because last time this came to the board, it was just equipment, and thank you for showing us how it's going to be used.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes, seven ayes, no nays, and motion carries. Another item for technology. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve and authorize a superintendent or superintendent's designee to enter into and authorize the superintendent to execute a three-year, $1 buyout master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with U.S. Bancor Government Leasing and Finance Inc. as well as all related documents pending legal review of lease terms for certain technology equipment for school district use not to exceed $780,000 in purchase price and three annual payments not to exceed $265,362 each in fiscal year 2018 through 2020.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Margaret, second by John. Any discussion? Maybe, Dave, could you give just a quick update on, I know we discussed it before, but it's just good to remind everyone.
Yeah, the, sorry, excuse me. This year is a big year for staff laptop replacements, so that's a good chunk of this, almost half of that is on staff laptops, so, and those are replacing laptops that are at least four years old, some are even older. So the teachers will be in much better shape after this. And then the other large portion is over 1,000 Chromebooks for the grades three and four deployment this summer. And the smaller piece are 12 Conic Minolta printer copiers that are due to be refreshed in the various schools around the district. And we, in terms of the lease itself, thought that going with a three-year lease would help, I mean, it was within our financial ability to have those payments a little higher than, as compared to a four-year lease, so we decided to do that and accelerate those payments and get that equipment paid off sooner rather than later. So I don't know if there's any, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, and motion passes. Your curriculum resources.
Okay, this is, just relates to Mary's request to be able to display these for 30 days and then we would come back and ask for approval after that time period.
I move that the Board of Education approve the public display of the proposed York High School curriculum resources.
There's a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Margaret, second by Chris. We had the presentation, is there anything else for Mary? Any questions? Okay, go ahead. Oh, it's a place, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Donations.
Okay, we have two donations here that are next on the agenda. The first is from the Hawthorne School PTA to donate $10,000 for classroom library needs. And the next one is for the Edison School PTA to donate an amount not to exceed $3,000 for guided reading leveled readers and for guided reading instruction in grades K through five. So both of these relate to our ongoing efforts to build up our leveled reading libraries at the elementary schools, which our PTAs have continued to generously support.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the $10,000 donation from the Hawthorne School PTA. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880 Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by Chris. Go ahead.
We just want to thank the Hawthorne community and PTA for this generous donation for our students in the literacy program and reading. I happen to be a school liaison at Hawthorne this year and at the PTA meeting that I attended, this was talked about and it was really nice to hear the teachers talking about how this is helpful and how good it is. And so we really want to thank all the community members and the Hawthorne PTA for organizing this. Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes, it's seven ayes, no nays, and motion carries. Go ahead. Is for Edison donation? I need a motion for that donation.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the $3,000 donation from the Edison School PTA. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880 Gifts to the District.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by Margaret.
Thank you to the Edison PTA and parents for helping us out in supplying fresh reading materials and books to support our new ELA program. So thank you, Edison community.
What do you want, yeah, I was just asked to explain this a little bit greater detail and I'd be happy to do that. We do have a learning and teaching budget that supports the curriculum and the basic curriculum needs are met through that, but because we are shifting in a new direction, to get fully up to speed with having the libraries with a new different type of concept that matches all the variety of student reading levels and student interests, it will take a while for us to, you know, completely build up all of those libraries at the schools. So when different entities are interested in supporting us and they raise money and want to know what our needs are, typically our principals have been guiding them in this direction. And the concern about equity of resources comes up. We do take that into account when we look at how we allocate funds to the schools. Title money at some schools helps offset some of that and provide resources to balance that out. And in some of the cases of some of the larger donations that have come in, we've examined existing libraries and need at the schools as well as the equity issue and balanced out the allocations accordingly. So we do try to make sure that all of our students have access to rich materials.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes, seven ayes, no nays, and motion passes. Superintendent's communication.
Okay, five Freedom of Information Act requests were received, one requesting information regarding length of a specific class which was granted, one requesting information on AP tests and classes which was granted, one requesting information on class exemption which was granted, one requesting information on specific staff practices which was granted, one requesting information on parent-teacher conferences which was partially denied, partially And then there was a question last week about what's a timeline look like between now and the end of the year related to future Focus 205 activities. So I included that in your packet. And the biggest thing that we need to do in the administration's opinion is secure the services of a construction manager and an architect. And there are other items on there, and this is kind of a draft timeline because depending on what kind of direction we get on different things, it may shape exactly how the input and feedback process looks with greater detail in terms of how we disseminate information and how we go out to the community. And then as the feedback comes in and as the board authorizes us to make certain decisions, then the process will continue to evolve. So this is kind of a general outline. There are various different ways that services of a construction manager and architect can be secured. We can go with our existing relationship and we can also go to an RFQ process where we would secure the services of a construction manager and architect through opening up the process. The advantage of getting the relationship with people on board early on will allow us to get better pricing, allow us to have greater ownership, and keep us consistent in ensuring that everybody understands the district priorities and what's going on throughout the entire process. So if the board is willing to allow the administration to move forward, it needs to know which avenue to pursue. And the second part of the, of your packet, the second enclosure, is an explanation that I asked Chris to put together and we just wanted to explain the difference between an RFQ and an RFP so people understood what we were talking about. One's a request for qualifications, one's a request for proposal. And then the second part of that attachment or of that enclosure talks about a typical range of fees for the services of those parties. So you have, the fees depend on the scope of the project, so typically it's a percentage based on whatever the community ultimately decides to support. So you see these large dollar amounts around, you know, that were presented tonight. And again, where we ultimately go depends on what the community's willing to support, but assuming that you have a certain dollar amount, we would not be committing to an exorbitant amount of money to the architects or the construction managers upfront. There would be a process in which there would be some front-loaded work that would be done and then other work that would be done throughout the process, but it would be done within a certain total scope that would be negotiated through the RFQ process. And the ranges that you see on there are for a construction manager, 2.5 to 4%, and for an architect, 6.5 to 8.5% are the typical ranges that you see for this kind of thing. So the other aspects of the, oh, excuse me, of the timeline are the need to secure the services of a communications expert to support any future process. And we would like to, our target date to present an operational plan for the board where we try to bring together all of the feedback from Focus 205 as it relates to student achievement, sustainability, and facilities. We would like to present that to you in July and we would, you know, be communicating various aspects of that with you leading up to July so that you would have ample time to ask questions and look at it and make sure you understand the rationale behind what's in there before we present it at the July board meeting. And then over the course, assuming that we are able to get a construction manager and architect on board over the course of the summer, we would be working on construction designs and cost estimates, so we would have schematic drawings that we could present to the public in the fall to get additional input. And then we are in the process of working with our current architect to get some of the more global numbers so that people can see, and our goal is to have this at the May 9th board meeting, so that people can see how some of these big-picture ideas that have been talked about in public fit within some of the bonding scenarios that Elizabeth shared tonight so people can just get a general idea of how dollars translate into projects. But I want to throw a caveat out there that that is very general and should be taken in- in that vein, because as we get into certain aspects of whatever project is approved and we get to greater specificity, those are very broad estimates that we would be seeing at this time. And then, we would also engage in an all-day kindergarten feasibility study because ultimate facility projects would need to take into account the community's desire to move in that direction, and so we would want to accumulate additional information on that to include as part of our overall planning process and next steps moving forward. So, that's kind of a general synopsis of what I included in your packet, and I'm assuming people may want to comment on that.
These fees are stated as a range, as a range of percentages of total construction How do you, assuming you go with the RFQ approach, how do you set the fee when their task is to establish a project?
Well, I'll let Chris address that, but the bottom line is that no matter how this, whatever the ultimate outcome is of the decision of the community and the Board to proceed in terms of the scope of any work or whatever, there's going to be some upfront costs that we have to bear in order to get some of this information to the public. And so, some of that is handled through not to exceeds or maybe approving certain portions of the work for, in phases. So, Chris, I don't know, can you, would you like to explain that a little bit?
Well, you would definitely have to negotiate with the vendor, and I think we would want to do a benchmarking survey of other school districts to see, to make sure that whatever we negotiate is in line with what the going market rate is for these services.
Would it be appropriate to break this into this, I mean, if you're doing these, I don't know what level, what percentage design you get to in this phase of design that you're suggesting we retain professionals for, but would you break that then into two parts where there is retention for this initial phase and then a retention later when you have this larger project with this larger fee?
I'm going to let Chris take a shot at that from his perspective, but you could, you could, I think, when you negotiate the agreement, write some things in there as to what some of the costs would be for the initial phase of the project, and so you'd have some certainty as to what that is going to be before you ultimately approve the relationship. But changing relationships midstream would work against the advantages that we believe are important in getting these people on board on the front end of the project. So, that would be my answer to that.
Similarly, I think what Dave was saying would be to have the fees like as part of the percentage, like you would get rebated or applied or credit towards the big fee percentage of the project. I think would be the way we would negotiate that.
I have two things, but on this particular topic of do you go out to RFQ or hire the firm that we've worked with over really the past several decades? Chris, do you think you would learn a great deal by going to RFQ?
No.
And I'll come back to the second one later. It involves the timeline in this memo.
I have a question. I'm wondering, are procurement practices, do they, what do they state about when we go to RFQ or when we do not need to go to RFQ?
Well, in this case, these are professional services, so they are exempt from the bidding process. The RFQ process does not have price included. You look at the qualifications, there's an interview process, they show you every, all the other projects that they've done, and so you're just trying to determine which company you think can do a high-quality job for your project, and then you negotiate the price afterwards. And RFP, they include the price, and because it's a public, transparent, you normally have to go with the low bid. So, that's kind of the downside to the RFP versus the RFQ is you, I mean, if you don't go with the low bid, then you have to have a really good explanation for why you're not going with the low bid on an RFP. But the RFQ is just qualifications, and you're selecting the vendor that you like the most, and then you're negotiating price afterwards.
And it would be very difficult at this stage in the process to have anybody put together an intelligent actual bid with a, you know, number, because there are so many variables that have yet to be determined.
So, Chris, what you're saying is even though if you hire a construction manager, once the design is complete, you're putting that design out to competitive bid, and that is by far and away the largest chunk of public money that we'd be spending.
Exactly.
Construction manager processes, you know, some people who know more than others about this, but the construction manager is, their role is they are experts in the market and the current pricing and the vendors, and they are able to keep the costs down and get the best to get you to come in at budget or under budget. Some people that have chosen just to use an architect have regretted that because they almost always go over budget. And so, they do secure the services of these outside companies, but they are able to navigate that process to make sure that you're getting the best deal possible for the scope of the work you're trying to do.
Can I just make a quick comment on RFP and the bid? I'm built theaters for a living right now, and we're spending a lot of money doing this stuff, and if there's anything of learning construction is, a low bid doesn't guarantee it's going to be the lowest cost. You know, you get halfway into a project and the contractor says whoops, and so your choice is to fire the contractor and bring somebody new one and start over again at a lot of cost and delay, or pay up. So, you know, in these processes, it's about qualifications, it's about understanding, it's about trust and a balance sheet that helps us. So, I think it's very important that we have someone that we are comfortable with, and I really would not advocate chipping this thing solely on price, although it's an important element.
There's no question, the procurement practices recognize that the relationship with your professionals is paramount in a project. The thing that I would want to make sure is that there's some documentation in some form available to the public so that when we ask to pay for this package of services with tax dollars, we can look people, or we can deliver the documentation that demonstrates that you got a good price. And if that's comparator districts and they're, you know, establishing kind of a survey of that, then, you know, I think by all means, but you're 100% right, you don't pick your professionals by the lowest price. You just don't do that. And so, just want to make sure that we have something to show that shows that this was a fair price with professionals that we have confidence in.
Jim?
Is it appropriate to ask about the timeline now?
Yes.
Okay, so, the last three Focus 205 sessions that I attended, it was loud and clear from the community members that attended that we were asking them to make decisions that they felt uncomfortable making without a price tag attached to the projects. Personally, I feel we owe it to the community to go back and ask their opinion with a price tag attached to the different projects which were brought up during that process. Tonight, we made a first step. We found out what the financing costs, and had William Blair put some numbers around And then, it is essential to have a construction manager, an architect, a professional that builds these kind of institutional buildings for a living, give us a fairly detailed cost estimate for what these projects would cost. And then, I'd like to see us go back to our constituents and ask their opinion with a price tag attached as kind of an operational matter. I would make that price tag on each project, what the taxes on a median-valued home in our community would actually cost. I mean, people see millions of dollars figures, but it doesn't mean anything until you know what that's going to cost you on your property tax bill. So, I'd like to see it proposed in that frame of reference. So, that was my question about the timeline.
So, when you, you're going to get, like I said, in May, you'll get some very general conceptual things, like very general, but if you look on the timeline here, August to November, there would be a formal process that would be developed once we have some of this more specific information, where we would go out to the public to all different kinds of, in all different kinds of ways. Personal appearances, you know, formal focus group-type things and other types of survey and, you know, scientific types of polling and other things like that to try to figure out what is resonating with people and what they are more interested in wanting to move forward with. So, that is definitely built in to this, even though it's not, you know, outlined in specific detail. It was certainly considered that that was going to be, you know, part of the process.
Thank you for allowing me, and I promise this will be my last one. In the May-June timeframe, the action item is secure the services of a marketing consultant to develop a formal communication strategy. Illinois law does not allow public money to be spent on the marketing of a referendum. Does this differ from that, or do we need to raise private money to, or have a community volunteer raise private money to secure those services?
Both. We're not, we would not be campaigning and advocating for successful passage of a referendum. You're correct, we're not allowed to do that. There would have to be a referendum committee that would deal with that part of the process. This has to do more with developing a communication strategy related to sharing information with the community and getting the community input to try to determine what the community is interested in, not actually working to pass a referendum.
Marketing and communications travel together, the same professionals do that, but the scope of the services are not about proposing a particular proposal, is what you're saying.
Correct.
I just wanted to echo what Jim had said about providing the financials back to the community, and also be clear about, make sure that we provide options.
Yes, that will be, that type of messaging will be built into May 9th to do our best to prevent people making assumptions that there are a bunch of fork-on conclusions in the process or whatever. We'll explain how some of these things can be flexible based on community interest and try to explain some of the rationale of why they're on there in the first place, and then, you know, when we have more refined information, you know, the formal input that we get in the fall will start to determine how that actually takes shape.
And then, my last question about the timeline is with regard to understanding, August-November 2017 highlights all-day kindergarten feasibility study with facility implications. And I wanted clarification that that was one of, one of the pieces of feedback that we got from the community in Focus 205, is the reason why that option only is highlighted specifically here, because that, we would have to look at every single one of our buildings in order to do that, and the others don't require that level of comprehensive, you know, facilities, expense, et cetera, update.
Yes, I think you're going to see that virtually every piece of feedback from the Phase 1 of the Focus 205 process is going to be somehow or another indicated in the operational plan that's going to be presented in July. The reason, so, you know, STEM spaces and all of those kinds of things are things that we could include in a future facilities project that the community would like to see, but not all of them have the same level of impact on what an ultimate plan is going to be, because the all-day kindergarten, the all-day kindergarten piece is clearly going to have some space implications and some more complexities that may drive exactly the dollar amounts or what the ultimate plan looks like in terms of which buildings maybe get the most attention, or how you would actually facilitate that, how the community, if they want it, would like to see it implemented. So, that's indicated on here for exactly the reasons you suggested. It's because it has more impact on whatever the ultimate facility plan is than the other recommendations that came out of the process.
So, Dave, I mean, this expands on it just a shade, but tweaks it maybe just a shade too. The operational plan in July of 17, this thing had always been, this process has always been about fitting these facilities into the educational mission of the district and the future vision for that. We have spent a lot of time talking about physical infrastructure. We're going to talk about operational planning. Cost, you know, there's a lot of things that are on that list that aren't physical that are important to the future of education. So, when we talk about that, can we please make sure that we talk about what it looks like and what it costs to deliver it, and how we're going to pay for it? And I know you're going to tell me we can probably afford it, but, you know, within the existing budget, but I want to know how, if we can make sure that that's addressed?
Yes, we can, we would definitely try to include a lot of those things in the way we present, but some of them are either cost-neutral or reallocating the resources. Some of them have some price tags associated with them, and we would try to explain that and include what the plan would be for that. And in some cases, we may have the plan that serves as a roadmap, and if for some reason or another, with the various things, with the state budget or other things that happen, we may have to recalibrate or reexamine timelines, et cetera. we may have to recalibrate or reexamine timelines, et cetera, but we would have a blueprint for what the priorities are and where we want to move toward. So, we'll try to be as specific as possible for the things that have costs attached to them.
So would you be, just to clarify, would you be costing out everything, you know, like at the last session when we had that list of, I don't know, 12 things, would you be costing all of that or just scenarios possible?
Well, for example, the plan will include in it that conceptually, we're looking to move toward all-day kindergarten pending the outcome of the community input that comes in the fall. And if they say they don't want it, they don't want it, but it's going to indicate in there that we're going to do a study and we're going to explore the feasibility and we're going to look into whether or not the community wants it. And some of the Focus 205 feedback was pretty strong that, you know, we think that's what they want, so we want to get into greater detail. But I can't give you a specific cost on that because there's different ways to implement that, and some of it's going to depend on what the community decides is willing to do. Because if we do it in certain ways, I can get efficiencies through the process that I can't get if we do it in other ways. And that may determine whether or not people decide if they're willing to support it or whether or not we can afford it. So I'm going to do my best to provide that information, but I'm not, you know, some of the things that are in process, I may not be able to always give you an exact answer until we continue this process of getting more information. So most of the things in there would be designed to guide the planning process and the resource allocation process that would ultimately require future board approval, provided that the funds are there. So it's not like people would be making decisions in July that have a bunch of unknowns, you know, attached to them. But it would be providing, you know, a guiding document for future decision-making, I guess is a way I would describe it. Did I answer what you're asking or not?
Sort of. I guess really simplistically, like, there is, you know, the list of, you know, Maker Spaces and the York Auditorium and those things. And so are you going to cost all of those things that were on the list? Or is it going, like, individually, so it is just a list of, here's what it is, here's what it costs? Or will it be more grouped together in scenarios?
Well, I'm going to start out by grouping it together in scenarios so that people can get an idea how to attach some of the potential projects to some of the information that Elizabeth shared tonight, because that can always be adjusted one way or the other. But I think it might help if people see where some of those things fit in the current scenarios that she explained. Otherwise, I could make up 50 different scenarios, you know, it might not be very helpful. So, you will, May 9th, I think, may clarify some of those things for you. I am going to have some of the initial things in there that have already been talked about and explain a little bit about why. For example, you brought up the York Auditorium. It's in desperate need of attention. If it's not included in a future referendum, I have no idea how we would be able to fund that. And it was cut out of the last referendum. So it was something that was originally slated, and we've been on hold now for quite a while. So I'll explain that. I will share with you an approximate cost. So there will be that type of information out there, but ultimately, the community may decide it doesn't want to do that. And that's not within my control to, you know, dictate that this is what's going to happen. So, it's going to include some of the original concepts that obviously have to address Lincoln and some of those needs that we all know are out there, as well as some of the information that is included in Frank's current tenure plan. That could include immediate needs, back maintenance. It's going to include, and then it's just going to be stretched out into the different scenarios so that people can see that if we did more, we might be able to redo the entrance at Bryan. But that's going to be very expensive, so maybe we can't do it or people don't want to pay for it. So, I think we'll get a little closer to some specificity at the next board meeting. Some of the other things that will be in there are things that are based on feedback and priorities that we got, like STEM and Maker Spaces at the different schools. The problem with putting anything of too much of a specific number on that now is because all of the school's layouts are different and the potential for what those spaces could be depending on the design of the school will differ. But that'll be included in there and as will some of the tech infrastructure things that we need to upgrade as a part of future projects. So I think people will see a lot of the things that are potentially possible, and then I think we have to go from there.
All right, anything else? Thank you.
Okay, so one last question. If we are going to secure the services of an architect and a construction manager, is it the board's will to negotiate with our existing people and come back with you with what they're, a proposal from them? Is it the board's will to postpone that? Is it the board's will to actually do an RFQ process?
If you're not going to learn a lot from RFQ, then it seems to be a waste of time to go through the process.
I guess I don't understand, and you do an RFQ, you get information about people you didn't know before, don't you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I mean, we've been, had very successful relationship with a couple of firms, and there's no doubt that that experience qualifies them more than others. You know, the experience you have with a professional is very important if it's been constructive. I don't know that, I mean, I think what's clear is that if the pricing information is backed up by data, then proposal RFP is not necessary. I guess I don't understand, when you say, what are you going to learn from the RFQ process? I mean, we already know about the firms we've been working with for years. I think the RFQ is about learning about what other firms would do.
So we can do whatever the board's preference is. What I, I guess what I didn't make clear is that if we do do the RFQ process, Chris, are we talking about four to six weeks or about a month probably, three to four weeks at the earliest? So that puts us back a little bit further in terms of getting some of the work started. So you just need to be aware of that.
John, I think some, part of that RFQ process is they're all going to come in and show us all the different projects and all their qualifications. And I think there are, a lot of them are going to be capable. So, I think Frank, you know, from working with the construction manager that we currently have, James, or McHugh, he is, you know, based on his experience at York and Hawthorne and all the other projects, he is very confident in their abilities because of his experience. It's hard going through that RFQ process and listening to their marketing of all the different things to get to that same level of confidence and comfort that Frank has with McHugh. I guess is why I said, I don't know if I'll learn a whole lot. I know that they've all done different school projects.
Well, I guess I'd take the same approach on the qualifications as I would about the price, which is to assemble and provide for the public some demonstration why you think the best option is to go forward with these two firms. And don't get me wrong, these are great firms. They're tops in school. The relationship is long, it's been very successful, we've worked with them. I don't question any of those facts, but I just want to make sure that when we, that we have documented for the taxpayers, that we're being effective both in pricing things and also finding the highest quality professionals. So I guess I'm not prepared to vote on, you know, whether it's an RFQ. You know, I'm comfortable if the evidence is there that these are the highest quality professionals, it makes sense to retain them, and that the pricey of evidence that the prices that they're charging are competitive with what's out there.
So possibly, we take the step to try and negotiate with them, prepare our survey of comparative districts, and if we're not satisfied with whatever it is that we negotiate, then we'll do an RFQ process after that.
You said RFQ doesn't deal with price.
Right.
So it would be some sort of modified RFP?
Well, no, because, well, we negotiate what their fee would be. We wouldn't negotiate, if we start with our existing people, we would negotiate an agreement with them and then come to the board and demonstrate that we believe that it's prudent to continue to proceed with them. And if we can't get information that satisfies us, or if, well, ultimately, if we can't present information that satisfies you, then we would, what Chris is saying, then we would do the formal RFQ process and see what comes in.
Yeah, I guess I don't think that we, with the information we have right now, can say clearly, do it this way. Okay? But you bring these qualifications, we'll respect the continuing relationship that's in there as well as the material that you provide on the price.
One question, well, along those lines. There's only one building that we're even talking about, which would be a clean slate. And even then, it's not guaranteed that it would be, but Lincoln, that you would scrape and rebuild a brand-new one. Everything else touches a building we already have, right? So, the familiarity of the vendor with the existing infrastructure when you're trying to do a renovation or some kind of add-on should allow them to be more efficient, which hopefully should be reflected in a price. I would think that not only are they qualified, but I would hope that if they are the ones that are going to do this without getting through an RFQ process, that they should be able to come in significantly lower than, I mean, if you go out and you benchmark kind of districts that talked to five different ones, picked one, started from scratch, and they cost X, that McHugh and White should be something less than that, given that they don't have a learning curve, and we should benefit from the fact that they don't have a learning curve. Otherwise, we might as well go out and talk to others. So for me, I think, like John said, I think the qualifications are fantastic. I would be looking for a price that came in at the low end of the range at worst.
Do you have the information you need to move on?
Yes, I believe that if we can come back to you with the general concepts that fit into some of the pricing that you saw tonight, just to get the conversation started, as well as reach out to our current architect and construction manager and see if we can come back with a proposal that is comfortable for the board, we'll start there. And if that's not comfortable for you, we'll go to the next step. That's what I heard, anyway.
Okay, moving on to board communications. Anything from the board, Chris?
One thing, I just wanted to take an opportunity to call the attention to something that Dave sent out this week related to the state budget. I just want to make sure we do this in front of the cameras, in front of everybody else. The state is behind $3.7 million in payments to our district. All right, I don't recall during my tenure on the board that it's ever been that high. So I just want to make sure that everybody pays attention to the note that went out. I think it went out, Talk 205. And anybody that doesn't get Talk 205, I'd love to see this show up in the papers so that folks that don't get Talk 205 can also understand that this budget is, standoff has now put us $3.7 million in the hole so far.
It's slated to be in the Independent this week.
Perfect. Thank you.
For the people that haven't seen the Talk 205, can we get a quick summary of what it is? It's about, Dave?
Well, no, I'll start the conversation. Malia did a lot of work to put the information together, and Chris did some work to try to get her some of the specific information that was included in there. So, it's the categorical payments that they're behind in primarily. The superintendents in the state of Illinois believe that we cannot continue to function and, as public education, of course, but as a healthy state, we can't function without a budget. This nonsense has to stop. And so, the gist of that release was to show that there is a united concern that is affecting millions of people across the state that has to be addressed and can no longer be ignored. So as far as any of the specifics, Chris, if you, I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, but, and Malia, you know, anything you want to add is fine too.
Well, I would just say that it's posted on the district website and all the school websites. It's been pushed to social media. So anybody that wants to check it out, just go to www.elmhurst205.org, and it's the first news item on the homepage.
The thing that's remarkable is it's a nonpartisan effort by the education professionals across the state, saying that this is getting in the way of educating our kids. So whether you're one side of the argument or the other side of the argument, the idea is to get to a final deal, get a budget, get a direction for the state. And I really support your efforts in this respect. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, you know, I agreed that we should sign on to this. Tony Sanders from Elgin is actually, was spearheading a lot of this statewide, and I would give him a lot of credit for that. Hopefully, you know, it will help. I'm not convinced it will, unfortunately, but this just can't continue.
I would just add that over 400 superintendents signed on to this, and they represent 1.35 million students in the state of Illinois. So, it's a lot of people.
And I just, to echo John, I mean, maybe hoping for a budget is hoping for too much. I'm just hoping that they pay their bills. But I also want to reiterate the importance of our fund balance and allowing us to absorb a hit like $3.7 million and continue to deliver the programs that we're delivering. So as we've talked about where our fund balance is, this is one of the main reasons why we carry the fund balance that we do.
Your board communication, Jim?
I have two things, not nearly as draconian. First, you know, sometimes our policy of not commenting what is said in public comment does get in our way. But I just wanted to reiterate that what was said up here about our administrative professionals in this district was absolutely true. And the district couldn't operate without them. They are absolutely essential to everything, making everything that runs in this district smooth, including interface with our parents and the public. So I was just going to suggest maybe another round of applause, given that tomorrow is Administrative Professionals Day. Second, I just wanted to observe that U.S. News and World Report came out with their national high school rankings today. And as Cheryl Sprandl has often advised me, don't And as Cheryl Sprandl has often advised me, don't live and die by these rankings. However, when enough rankings have enough consistency, you know, people do look at the rankings to buy houses and it is disappointing that some of these rankings change dramatically every six months. But U.S. News seems to be pretty consistent and they all have their different criteria. But I just wanted to point out, U.S. News today ranked York the 18th best high school in Illinois. And I will also point out that eight of the schools ranked ahead of York were Chicago Magnet schools that have applications that have thousands of highly qualified students competing and they take those top students. So if you compare York to suburban high schools that take all comers, you know, York clearly is in the top 10. And I just think we need to acknowledge that and thank our parents, our students, our teachers, our administration for affecting that kind of result. So thank you.
I would like to add to that, just briefly, even though my turn's over, Aaron is not satisfied. So just so you know.
Neither am I, but that was another topic for another day.
Thanks for sharing that. Any other board communications? Okay, upcoming meetings, May 9th Board of Education meeting and May 24th Board of Education meeting. We've reached the end of the agenda, I'll declare the meeting adjourned.